Good morning, everyone. Everybody got so quiet here. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 11, 2023. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the Century Jury Room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street. This is a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas. And we are very honored today to have with us Pastor Diane Raspberry of the Hope Community Church to do the invocation for us today. So Pastor Raspberry.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for every opportunity that we have to come to you to lift up others and to make our needs known to you. And Father, this morning, your word says that whatever is bound in heaven is bound on earth, and whatever is bound is loosed in heaven is loosed on earth. And Father, right now, in the name of Jesus, we bind his unity, we bind hatred, disrespect, we bind bitterness and resentment, and Father, we loose unity, respect, honor, gratitude, and love. And Father, we just, we know that we are our brother's keeper, and Father, we just lift up our brothers and sisters to you today. And Father, we ask that you help us to do a better job of loving them and taking care of them. And Father, we just come to you, and we just lift up this meeting. We ask that you send your Holy Spirit to be here with us, to God, and direct us, to give us discernment and wisdom. And Father, I pray protection over this meeting, over all the Commissioners' Court, Father, and over those that are here. And Father, we just love you so much, and we give all honor and praise and glory to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the great state of Texas, honor Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas Constitution of God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Okay, here today, we have with us the Granbury High School Stowaways Drill Team. Look at that backup there. There's 26 of them, and they're all here, and they just won. Let me see the proclamation. Do we have it here?
There's a copy.
Here's the copy. Okay. And let's sign. Okay. All right. This is it here. We have the drill team instructors here who look like they're members of the drill team themselves here. I said, who's going to present this to them? So y'all, please, we've signed this. Would y'all like to come down and gather around? I guess we're going to have to get a big picture here. So, yeah. God. Look at this. This right here are the two coaches right here. They look like they're students themselves. Do you want to be able to read this? I'd like for you to read that. So they will, everybody? And if you can kind of stand up to her and... Y'all gonna have to do like three rows, I guess, or something here. Okay? Y'all want to get in front? Y'all get, you get, y'all kind of...
I have a little mic.
Okay. No, yes.
Okay. So the proclamation says, "For our determination to exceptional team talent, the Granbury High School Stowaway Drill Team enables these student athletes to earn 2023 MA Grand National Champion Officers and Team Awards on March 25, 2023. And whereas the Stowaway Drill Team officers earned first place in best-in-class in the classic division, all three awards were jazz, novelty, and lyrical. And whereas the Stowaway Drill Team earned first place in best-in-class in the classic division, team awards were jazz, novelty, and lyrical. And whereas additional accomplishments included invitations to perform in the Dallas Holiday Parade, competing in the Proud Peasers 3's dance regional competition, and earning six first-place awards at the MA Dance State Competition. And now, therefore, I, Jack Wilson, Commissioner for Peasers 3, along with all members of the Commissioners' Court of the county of Texas, do hereby recognize and congratulate Granbury High School and the Stowaway Drill Team on their outstanding accomplishments. And further, I urge all citizens of the county to join me in recognizing all members of the team, their coaches and parents, in celebrating the team's achievement, and wish the members continue success." Thank you very much.
Okay, well, look. We're very proud of y'all. Yeah.
Sorry. Resting right here. I'm going to move this a little more. Yeah. Oh, 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 oh.
Here, I'll put it in a little bit.
Great. Great job, really. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Now, y'all go back to school and practice another and win another trophy, will you?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You want to get a copy? Keep the pretty one. Let me see here. Let me give you...
Yeah. Why don't you sign both of them? Let her sign them, and then give her one on your feet, I guess, and then you can file the other one.
All right.
That's just part of the great things that are going on at Granbury High School, and there would have been a second proclamation today for the Junior ROTC Rifle Team, except they're at Colorado Springs right now in the Junior Olympics Trials. And so we will be honoring them on their significant wins of six consecutive national titles on the first Commissioners' Court in May, when they return from, you know, their competition. But we'll address that at that point. But there's a lot of great things going on at Granbury High School. Thank you.
Good. That is a significant win. And one girl's going to the Olympics, I believe, isn't she?
Yeah, there could be as many as three go from the team, actually, go to the rifle, to the Olympics on the rifle competition.
And the total team is comprised of all females, not one male on this six consecutive national teams. Can't believe that. What do you think about that, Pastor McMahon?
I think that the young men ought to be careful what they do.
I knew we could always get a sage remark from you, sir. Okay. All right. The next item is another special presentation. Well, it's actually, we're going to receive an update from the Texas Association of Counties on the Hood County Medical Plan, which will include mid-year review, wellness update, and recommendations for the plan going forward. And here they are. Ms. Welborn, introduce who you got here.
Yes, good morning.
Thank you, sir.
This morning, we have Jonathan and Amy from Texas Association of Counties. These are the two that I rely heavily on as far as our medical plan and our wellness plan goes. If there is an employee who has an issue that I don't feel like I can help them with, these are the two folks I reach out to, and they're always awesome and getting back with me and helping me with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So they're here this morning to give our mid-year review.
Hey, good. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank y'all for having us. It's hard to follow up both of those groups. I don't know that I have any awards of significance to contribute today, but I'm happy to, happy to talk to you about TAC and our healthy county program. And I have with me Amy Bridges, who is the new wellness consultant for the Northeast. So we have, we have a full team now servicing the Northeast, including Hood County. And Melissa was super nice, but I'm sure all of you already know how great of a job she does for you on your behalf. I don't know that I have anyone else in my territory that advocates as strongly on behalf of county employees as Melissa does. So we'll make sure I let y'all know that as well.
How much did you pay him?
I would say I did pay him a little.
Not out of the county treasury, though, but she does do a wonderful job for everybody here. Let's give Melissa Welborn a hand here today. Good. Thank you very much for what you do. Okay.
So just a quick reminder about the TAC pool, or, you know, introduction for Commissioner Samuelson, who's new. We are a kind of a risk pool, but it's in the health insurance and wellness space. So we have over 47,800 members. We have roughly over 200 groups that include counties, county entities, we have some water districts, tax appraisal districts, things like that. But that pooling allows us to spread the risk and provide some financial stability so where when we do come to you with a renewal, it's not going to be as heavy if it was, you know, just Hood County out there on your own. And we have great partnerships with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, as Melissa mentioned, and Navitas has saved us a tremendous amount of money on the pharmacy side. And then it's our responsibility as consultants to provide the customer service, you know, be here for Melissa, for open enrollments, and then for you all as you have questions. I understand you have a busy agenda today, so we're not going to necessarily go through all of these items. I've included all of our contact information in the folders I presented you. Feel free to reach out to either of us. We'll be happy to, happy to chat with you on that. But the purpose of the mid-year review is to just, you know, discuss how the plan is doing, set some expectations about what's going forward, and then touch on some of the, you know, maybe some of the more specific health issues that the county is having. So right now, you're operating at a 12-month loss ratio of 112.81%. What that means is that for every dollar that is contributed in premiums, if we pay out a dollar in claims, that comes out to 100%. So for every dollar, we're paying out $1.12 for Hood County claims. So we like to traditionally have that around 94%. That's our target, and that allows for administrative costs and things like that. So you do run a little bit higher than what the pool typically does run. It's not uncommon for the age of your demographic, along with some of the high-cost claimants that you've had, and we'll get into a little bit of that. You know, we're proud to say that over the last three years, the average increase has been 5.8%. While we know no increase is ideal, especially for a county of your size, we know this is the second biggest line item on your bill traditionally, or for your budget. You know, we are proud that we've been able to bring it in significantly under 10%, and I'm hearing, you know, in the market, it's as high as 12 to 20%, depending on the size of the groups and the public entities. So we're not certain what the increase is going to be for this year, or if there will be an increase. That information will be available towards the end of May, and we'll touch on that a little bit. But I'm going to let Amy go ahead and speak to the diagnostic categories and kind of where a lot of the money is being spent, and share a little bit of your background as well.
Sure.
Good. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Amy Bridges. I am a registered dietitian and a diabetes educator, and happy to bring my expertise to these counties. We took a look, if you'll notice on this slide number six, we took a look at last year's top three diagnostic categories and compared them to where we are at this point in the year. If you'll notice, last year, the top spend was on muscular skeletal disorders. So, you know, things like osteo, you know, orthopedic osteoarthritis-type issues is going to be your top spend last year, followed by respiratory diseases, things like asthma, COPD, followed by nervous system disorders. So those are the top three categories for last year. Compared to this year, you've got some sort of nominal categories that are kind of outliers. This pre-MDC category is really pre-surgical spends. So people in the pool that are having surgical procedures, that's that, that pre-diagnostic dollars are going there so far this year, followed by health services and procedures, which are also very similar, kind of a catch-all pool is where those dollars go, followed by circulatory disorders, which is things like heart disease and hypertension. And if you turn to the next slide, kind of a comparison of last year to this year, your top three chronic conditions are very similar. The order's a little bit different in terms of the dollars spent between last year and this year, but the top three are hypertension, diabetes, and hyperlipidemia, which all kind of tie to metabolic syndrome, which we know is so closely related to obesity. So we'll talk maybe about some ideas we have to kind of help the plan get a little healthier and prevent and manage some of these chronic conditions a bit better. But if you take a deep dive, you can look at some of the information on the claimants, the number of claimants and the number of dollars spent. So we won't take up much of your time looking there. Followed on Slide 8 by your medications. Now, we know the cost of drugs, pharmaceutical drugs is rising across the nation, but you'll notice that your top spend last year and this year continues to be insulin. We know that insulin costs are rising, so that's where your top dollars are being spent, followed by Incredin Memetics, which are injectable diabetes medications. Funny thing about those drugs is they're also being used and prescribed for weight management, so they're very hard to get your hands on, and if you can't get your hands on them, they're very costly. So you can see those dollars being spent there, followed by anti-romantic, you know, arthritis-type medications. So that's where those dollars are spent, on drugs. If you'll notice on Slide number nine, this looks at the plan and the percentage of those individuals in the pool getting their annual physicals. And it's about 29% last year of those in the pool were able to get their annual physical, which is a great tool in helping to catch those chronic conditions and diagnoses before they become chronic and major issues. And up to this point in this year, it's about 14%. So we're on track to meet that. The last slide, Slide 10, is the healthy county programs that we have available, and this shows the participation last year. This just kind of gives us some historical data and really identifies some opportunities on ways that we can get the county healthier in this coming year. Arasty is our chiropractic service that helps with pain management. Wonder Health and Omada are going to be those weight management services. You've got a couple folks participating. Levango is diabetes and hypertension management. You've got 51 that participated last year. There's definitely some opportunities to up those numbers based on the diagnoses that we see in the pool. MD Live, which is that telehealth service, continues to be well utilized by the pool. People doing those telehealth visits, staying out of the primary care just for simple things. It also saves the health plan money, so it's great to see you guys using that. The EAP is the Employee Assistance Program. It looks small at 1.25%, but it's actually one of the best numbers across the state. You guys are utilizing that service, so it's great to see. And then last is our rewards program. You guys are eligible for the employer rewards of up to $9,000 based on the population, based on the number of lives in this pool. You guys earned this last year $1,170. And the way that the county earns those employer rewards is through health events and health screenings, lunch and learns, education events, as well as those participants that participate in that Sonic Boom program. So you had five in this last year, complete three out of four in those contests, which earned the county dollars. And in June last year, there was also a lunch and learn event, which Shimmeria, who was here before me, conducted that, and there was a great turnout. I think there was about 30 or 40 participants come to that. So that's a great way to earn the county dollars that you can put back in to wellness programming. And Jonathan, I'll pass it back over to you.
Good.
So on Slide 11 here, Amy has just some ideas of, you know, promoting different participation in the different programs that we offer that she went over. We come out every year for open enrollment, and we're committed to coming out again this year. Melissa's already sent us the dates, so she's the first one on our calendar every year. So we'll be out here, and we'll definitely do, spend a little more time on the healthy county programs now that we do have a complete team. We'll go and move on to just what's next, what's upcoming, and that's going to be on Slide 12. So we do have a new vendor that we brought onto the pool, so WEX. So they are going to handle flex money accounts, health savings accounts, cafeteria plan offerings, so we'll make sure we share all of that with Melissa to pass along. We did an ancillary product, RFP, and we are changing our life insurance vendor from Voya over to Dearborn National, which is part of Healthcare Service Corporation, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas as well. Something exciting that will definitely contribute to increased employer rewards would be the new wellness vendor that we're bringing on. That's going to be announced in early May, as soon as our board approves it. But we're familiar with this company. It's one that you will have heard of before, so once we're able to share more information on that, I'm really encouraged by it. It's a little bit easier to use. I'm not sure if any of y'all have used Sonic Boom before, but we are, we are really excited about our new program here. And then we've got our renewal schedule, and that's on the next slide, but we also have an upcoming eligibility platform update, and that's just going to make some things go a little bit easier for us that we've had challenges with in the past. So updating member term dates, things like that, administrative stuff that we, you know, traditionally have not had a ton of issues with, but because of our outdated technology, we've had a couple of things. So we're excited about that as well. So upcoming, I mentioned, on May 4, we're going to have our healthy, our health and employee board pool meeting. And so they're going to meet, discuss the renewal rates, they're going to determine what they are, and then we will host webinars on May 15 and 16, and I'll get information out to Melissa at the time as to what the rates are, as well as alternate plan options and alternate rates for you as well. And then towards the end of May, the official renewal package will be sent out, and we ask that it be returned back to us by June 30. But we do have a little bit of wiggle room on that in the event that you may need that. And then just the last page is our contact information. So you've got our cards, but we also have Karen Bowers back in the office, who does a great job for Melissa and for us, kind of just answering the day-to-day, you know, system issues that we have, you know, employee issues that come up. So we've got a full team here ready to support you, and like I mentioned, you've got a great, great team helping you out as well locally. But we're happy to take time to answer any questions that any of you may have.
I think y'all done a good job, all of y'all. So keep up the good work. Nice to have y'all on board.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for coming down here. Okay. Okay. Next, there are no service awards, am I right? So next are the citizens' comments at large. We only have one today, and that's Dr. Granick. You want to comment at large?
Well, I'll refer to, I have two items on there.
Yeah.
I'll refer to miscellaneous.
Well, I thought you had open mic on here, too.
You have two items.
You have open mic?
Yes, I'll pass on open mic.
You pass on open mic? Okay. So then you're on three and five. Okay? So, all right. Okay. So now we're going into the miscellaneous agenda. So the item number one is to discuss and take appropriate action and authorize the judge to sign the one-year contract between Hood County and the Hood County Appraisal District. We have anybody? Yes. Where is all this stuff here? Three.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? I'm good. Good morning. Andrea's out, so I'm gonna bring the papers she took care of yesterday. I have the front page for you, that the dates were corrected on there. And then I have the last page for you, that the date was actually corrected on there also.
Okay. I noticed that everybody at the, Eddie Rowe has signed as the chair, Ron Sutton has signed as the secretary, and Eddie Rowe has signed as the chief appraiser, and it's been approved by Andrea Ferguson as well.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Mills, I assume that you have looked at this property tax assessment and collections contract?
Yes, sir, I did it back in February. I don't know. I thought it would be voted on before April, but...
Yeah.
Anyway, I did review it, but it's been...
Amended, corrected.
Two months, and so the date needs to be changed.
The date on that one is correct.
Yeah, I've corrected it to April the 11th here. Okay?
Yeah, and then I have the front page, because I believe the board didn't meet till March 20 for CAD. So I have the front page for you that was updated for April 1, 2023 to March 1, 2024.
Okay. Well, I can, I can go ahead since everybody's signed this. Is that all signed?
That's the front page.
Okay, this is the front page right here. So is that the correct date, then? April 1 of 2023 through March 1 of 2024?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that's what I would thought, but...
Why wouldn't it be March 31st?
Typically, that contract runs from March 1 to March 1.
Correct. Correct. But since the board didn't meet till March 20, they had to adjust the dates to April.
Okay. With that change on this, and I'm going to initial this page at the bottom here. Okay. So with that page and this, okay. Okay, do I hear a motion regarding the one-year contract between the Hood County and the Hood County Appraisal District?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the judge to sign the one-year property tax assessment and collections contract as presented with the Hood County Appraisal District.
Second. I am motioning made by Commissioner Eagle, second by Commissioner Wilson, for the county judge to sign the one-year contract between Hood County and the Hood County, Hood Central Appraisal District. Any further discussion? If not, all those in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you very much for bringing this down here. If you will hand this, I only have one, so you can let Ms. Lang sign it there, too. I think there's a place for... Okay. Thank you very much for making that down. Okay, the second item is...
You're still up, so you can just stay there.
I am. You're correct.
Okay. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to increase the change drawer for the tax assessor collector Granbury Office from $1,000 to $2,000. What do you got to say about that? Y'all need more change?
We do, and it's, it's part of the clerks' like startup money for the day. And as much as the county's grown, this hasn't changed since 2017, and we're seeing a lot of cash flow, and, you know, either I or Andy is making two bank runs every day just to get change. So I think raising that is really going to help, and being able to start the clerks with a little more money for the day will also help.
Good.
I noticed it says, you know, Granbury, we're not changing the amount at the acting office?
No, no.
Okay. Just for clarification.
Yes, we're just changing it for the main office, because the main office also, we provide the clerks in the DPS office with their startup money, too. So that kind of, and then we're one of the few counties that still do boats, and we're seeing a lot of boats, and that's a lot of cash flow that we're seeing.
Okay. Any further comment or questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to allow the tax assessor collector to increase the change drawer for the Granbury Office from $1,000 to $2,000.
Second. I have motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allow the tax collector assessor to increase the change drawer from $1,000 to $2,000, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So tell Andrea she won both things, okay?
I sure will. You won. Thank you.
All right. Good. Okay. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to submit to TCEQ an amendment to the rules of Hood County, Texas for onsite sewage facilities, known as OSSF, dated February the 25th, 2014. The proposed amendment is to establish provisions for homeowners to maintain the OSSF at their primary residence after the initial two-year period. Hood County homeowners may choose to self-maintain aerobic systems upon completion of one of the TCEQ-approved courses listed on the Hood County website. This changes in compliance with Texas Administrative Code Title 30, Chapter 285.7, which states, homeowners who maintain their own septic, their own systems are exempt from contract requirements as provided in subsection D4 of this section. This is proposed by Commissioner Andrews and Commissioners Samuelson. So I've got some speakers here, and the first speaker on this is Mr. Tom Woodward. Mr. Woodward?
Thank you.
Good morning, sir.
For letting me speak, and thank you for giving your time to the, to the commission here. I want to thank Nanette for bringing this up once again. I moved into my house in 1996. I live in Pecan Plantation. At that time, the contractor talked me into getting an aerobic system. Septic systems wasn't my...
We do. And it's, it's part of the clerks' like startup money for the day. And as much as the county's grown, this hasn't changed since 2017. And we're seeing a lot of cash flow. And, you know, either I or Andy is making two bank runs every day just to get change. So I think raising that is really going to help. And being able to start the clerks with a little more money for the day will also help.
Good.
I notice it says, you know, Granberry, we're not changing the amount at the acting office?
No, no.
Okay. Just for clarification?
Yes. We're just changing it for the main office because the main office also, we provide the clerks in the DPS office with their startup money, too. So that kind of, and then we're one of the few counties that still do boats, and we're seeing a lot of boats, and that's a lot of cash flow that we're seeing.
Okay. Any further comment or questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to allow the tax assessor collector to increase the change drawer for the Granberry Office from $1,000 to $2,000.
Second. I have motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allow the tax collector assessor to increase the change drawer from $1,000 to $2,000, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So tell Andrea she won both things, okay?
I sure will.
Thank you.
You won.
All right.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to submit to TCEQ an amendment to the rules of Hood County, Texas for onsite sewage facilities, known as OSSF, dated February the 25th, 2014. The proposed amendment is to establish provisions for homeowners to maintain the OSSF at their primary residence after the initial two-year period. Hood County homeowners may choose to self-maintain aerobic systems upon completion of one of the TCEQ-approved courses listed on the Hood County website. This changes in compliance with Texas Administrative Code Title 30, Chapter 285.7, which states homeowners who maintain their own septic, their own systems are exempt from contract requirements as provided in subsection D4 of this section. This is proposed by Commissioner Andrews and Commissioners Samuelson. So I've got some speakers here, and the first speaker on this is Mr. Tom Woodward. Mr. Woodward? Good morning, sir.
For letting me speak, and thank you for giving your time to the, to the commission here. I want to thank Nanette for bringing this up once again. I moved into my house in 1996. I live in Pecan Plantation. At that time, the contractor talked me into getting an aerobic system. Septic systems wasn't my forte, so I really took his advice. I was told it was cheaper, more efficient, less maintenance. A lot of that isn't true. I've lived in that house for 28 years. I've had a contract because of the Hood County requirements for 28 years. You'd think that the maintenance would be a little bit less than a lateral line system, but in fact, my system, which is a jet system, is required, according to my manual, to be pumped every three to five years. So there's really no advantage there. It cost me between, over these 28 years, between $150 and $250 a year to maintain that system with a contractor. And if you figure that out, I've, I've watched them come out to the house. They spend about 10 minutes there, three times a year. This morning, he happened to come out to the house, and my wife said he was there for five minutes. That equates to about $200 an hour, maybe $400 an hour if you figure, $600, $800 an hour if you figure five minutes, three times a year. That doesn't include repairs. So if something goes wrong with a system, he will alert me possibly, and I have to pay to get that system fixed. Now, having said that, when they're done with their inspection, they'll put a card on your door telling you what's wrong. My alarm, there's two alarms on these systems. When the sewage gets up high enough and the pump doesn't pump, it alerts you, one with a light, one with a horn. My horn hasn't been working for 10 years. And no one has ever put that on my card. So I really question how efficient these guys are. I've talked to several of these maintenance guys when they come out, and most of them are not trained by, by the TECQ, but their boss tells them what to do, and their boss is the one that's qualified and does all the paperwork. Over the years, and this subject came up prior to COVID, and at that time, we had a passionate discussion about polluting Lake Granberry and the inability of homeowners to maintain their own system. There are 29 counties upriver of Lake Granberry. Of those 29 counties, only four of them have similar provisions to having a contract as Hood County does. So if you can't control the upstream people, I don't think, I think that's a straw man argument about protecting Lake Granberry. Although it's a good idea, I think homeowners can do it a lot better than someone who comes out three times a year. I'm out in my backyard every afternoon. I can hear if the aerator pump stops. I can see the light if the alarm comes on, that light comes on. And I can do it better than they can. So I think it's, and I know there's a worry that, that homeowners, everybody's going to sign up for this program. Well, I don't think that's the cause. There's a lot of people that don't want to deal with septic system. So those people that will sign up and will take the course are going to take care of their systems better than any maintenance contract can. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. The next speaker is Steve Biggers.
Thank you, Court. I appreciate the time. Thank you, Nanette, for being a servant leader, bringing this up. I appreciate it. There's probably not a person in this place that knows how I feel about this. Before we get all the skies falling and the lake's going to turn into a swamp, let's talk about kind of how this came about. TCEQ puts no requirements on homeowners other than the first two years. Texas Code puts no requirements on homeowners, you stated that in your agenda, other than the first two years. We, as the county, are the authorized agent for that, to enforce that. You come up with the rules. This body comes up with the rules. As Mr. Woodward just said, it's almost 30 years of doing this now. So this has been, as I've said many, many times, this is, this is an extortion from a county level, a government body telling citizens, certain citizens, how to spend their money, where to spend their money. This is not county-wide. If you want to drive a car in this county, there are steps you have to do to be able to drive a car in this county or in this state. This, this select rule targets 6,500 people in the county, and that's it. There's 6,500 contracts in this county. It came about almost 30 years ago. We had a commissioner on the court at the time doing these rules that, that was in the septic business and never recused himself. That, to me, when you look at the history, is really something that's probably shouldn't have happened. And so homeowners have a right to the privacy of their property. They have a right to control their property and be able to do this. So the, the county enforces these things. Third-party vendors enforce those things over homeowners, and it's almost like a power trip. And now we come to find out, with the extortion side of things, there was a letter that Environmental Health sent out last year to the maintenance providers. Basically, it says, effective October 1, 2022, Hood County Environmental Office will be charging $20 for every septic contract. 6,500 contracts, that's $130,000 a year. So when I call Sonia at the Environmental Health saying, what's this for? That's for filing. That's for filing. $130,000 a year for filing. That's a pretty good salary to, to be able to just file. And then there's also the fact that you either have to pay that directly to the provider, or you have to pay that to the county. Because you have to write a check to the county, or your provider adds another $20. If you're not in compliance 30 days prior to when your contract expires, if your contract expires April 1, if you don't have it in by the end of March, there's another $50 fine on top of that if you send it in the 10th of March or the 10th of April. There's another $50 fine. That is extortion. That is extorting to the 6,500 people that have this system, and you're lauding that over us to get in our pockets when people can get trained and do this and be very capable of doing this. Maybe a suggestion? You want to charge $25 for each contract that's here? $130,000 a year? Hire three people in the county and segment the 6,500 out, and have these county employees go around and check the system once a year. You can afford to do that and not have this third-party extortion. So this, this should pass 5-0, folks. If you're, if you're citizen-minded, if you're a servant leader, and you want people to get trained and, and understand their system and protect this environment, well, nobody's saying go no contracts. Everybody's saying get, get trained. I've said that for four years. Get trained. Should pass 5-0. So be a servant leader, be for the citizens or against the citizens. Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker is Tina Brown.
Good morning. I just don't understand. How can we be assured that people are maintaining their own systems? You know, without, without checks and balances? How can we be assured? We live on a lake. Do you swim in this lake? I do. My kids do. My grandkids do. How can we be assured? I mean, because they said they maintained it? I mean, is there going to be spot checks to make sure that, just because they said they did, that it's happening? Do you swim in the lake? You know, I mean, this is, and it's a big water source for all of Texas, I mean, from here on down. Just because someone signed a piece of paper and turned it in doesn't mean they actually did the work. Will you make surprise inspections to make sure, and check and make sure that this is being done? Will there be a way to anonymously report problems? Is this new report basically the same as the one used now for maintenance companies? There's a lot of unanswered questions. And I, you know, I, I thought maybe there'd be some discussion first, and there wasn't. Are these continuing education classes after you've taken their approved course? Are there any continuing education-type classes after you've taken the course? So that, is, is that certificate that you get valid forever? I feel like that environmental health will have to hire new employees. Is that in the budget to handle all this paperwork? If this passes, can we require that this info be posted online for all of us to see who passed, who didn't? There's just so many unanswered questions. I wish there was more discussion about this, other than, you know, how much it costs. There's a lot of, most, like, the people who spoke today before me live in very nice neighborhoods. There's a lot of not, not-nice neighborhoods that, how are they, how, how does this affect them? I don't feel like they're being looked after. I don't know. There's just so many questions I have. Maybe there should be a workshop on how to handle this? I just, I just don't think we should just throw out what we're doing because it seems to be working. I swim in this lake every summer. So do my grandbabies. And I hope to keep, keep doing it. Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker on this topic is Michael Davis.
Thanks for turning my sheet, my sheet in this time. I appreciate it. Uh-huh. Anyway, so let's go ahead and adjust the real reason we're here, okay? You taught a class you weren't allowed to teach. You weren't certified to teach it.
Talk to the court.
You're not getting in your way. Hush up.
Talk to the court.
You sat there. He's not getting in his way, so you sit there and incentivize them to bring this on the floor. Can't do that. You can't change the rules to fit your agenda. You can't do that. You charged money.
Needs to address the court.
And he wasn't certified to teach it. He got mad, and he said, I want you to put it on the agenda. You go to you two, you two sit there and put it on the agenda. It blows my mind how you do all these underhanded things, and you think you're not going to get caught. We got eyes all over this county, all over this town. It always comes out. Always.
Mr. Davis, this is front and center. We're doing this in open court in front of everybody.
Yeah, well, I'm here talking about it, too.
This is not, nobody has gone to a back door and come to me and asked me to put this on the agenda.
All I'm saying is, you guys really need to think about who you're backing up and who you're taking your orders from. All right?
I'm taking my orders from the people who put me in office.
You got somebody who has a history of being a con man, who sits there and he wants to make money off of this.
Judge, are you going to allow this disrespect to go on?
I'm asking questions, aren't I? It's an honest question.
You're attacking the citizens sitting here.
I'm attacking a man who's financially incentivized to get this done. Go ahead, roll your eyes.
I'm not rolling your eyes. I don't know where the financial connection is. I don't know.
He charged money to teach a class that he, that, that he's not allowed to teach.
I don't believe he taught it. Didn't you bring in an instructor on this, and the money went to the instructor?
Well, he got an injunction to pay all the money back because people's systems are failing, and he was told he can't teach more classes. And yet here he is trying to, you know, and since inside people come in and speak against it.
Have you read the proposal?
Yeah, I read the proposal. I read all the, all the background to it, too.
Okay. I, I mean.
I'm a firm believer that you try to silence people that are telling the truth, all right? You do it. The gentleman in the blue shirt behind me does it.
What's your issue with the process? The, the process is that we present this to TCEQ. It comes back. If approved, then there's a hearing, a public hearing. Do you, what's your problem?
He doesn't want to pay somebody to maintain a septic system. He went to him. We came to y'all. Come on. Do you honestly think that people won't find out eventually?
There's a public hearing.
Appreciate it.
Okay. The next speaker is Dr. Granik, Harold Granik.
Well, a previous speaker has said that this fee is an extortion. I guess the same extortion when I get my car inspected, the state requires that I pay for getting an inspection. That's sort of the same kind of extortion. We live in this society. Some of the things, we, we certainly want our own property governed, but some of the things we do affects other people. And that's why this society works if we respect those laws. There seems to, the system has worked okay. I have a question. What happens if someone has taken the course and has proved, then sells their land to somebody else? Is there a way to keep track of that, that that new person has done a contract or such? I would think that we should vote against this at the moment and review all the ramifications rather than just blatantly say, let's accept this because it's a matter of personal property. I don't see it as a matter of government extortion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, Grant Wood.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. Simply, I wanted to speak against the proposed rule change to onsite sewage facilities. These changes do not benefit all of the citizens of Hood County. Loosening the rules to allow homeowners to maintain after two years doesn't really pass the common sense test. Maintenance problems occur the longer the system exists. This gentleman pointed that out. Will most homeowners possess the tools and skills, and frankly, the will, to do what it takes to maintain these systems? Or will they sit on them and pass them along? Could, you know, if they discover that they have a problem, will they just, oh, well, maybe we should just move down the road, get another two years? The rules of the OSSFs in Hood County are meant to protect the county, the lands and the waterways of the county. A loosening of these rules does the exact opposite. He talked about this rule has been in place for 30 years. Why now? Why are we trying to change the rule now? One of your favorite sayings. I would ask you to please vote to continue to protect the interests of all the citizens of Hood County. The rule has been in place for 30 years. Let's not change it now. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Dax, you're the environmental protection. Would you like to weigh in on this, please?
Judge, before she, I'd like to go ahead and talk about why this is on the agenda, and then she can respond.
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
Have a seat then. Let her, Commissioner Samson would like to speak prior to you.
Yeah. So we've, we've talked. So, so since taking office in January, I've been approached by several people in my precinct. They've contacted me, asking me about this requirement, and asking if there, why the requirement was there, and that it had been brought up before. And I, I knew that it had been brought up before because I was here in court the day that it was brought up. So I looked into the Texas Administrative Code and the Health and Safety Code, and talked to several other counties that are also water counties, like Comel County, Guadalupe County, Burnett County. So knowing that this issue came up before and what the concerns were at that time, I hope that this proposal will address the concerns, as well as provide the ability for homeowners that wish to maintain their septic to do so. As you may be aware, the Texas Administrative Code provides for homeowners to maintain their own septic systems without a contract after the first two initial years. That doesn't mean you can move down the road to a new house, and you bought a house, and the septic system is existing. That doesn't mean you don't have, that, that doesn't qualify. It's two years of initial implementation. However, counties can add additional requirements It's two years of initial implementation. However, counties can add additional requirements as long as they are approved by the TCEQ. So the proposal we have here models the Guadalupe County in that homeowners will have the ability to maintain their own septic after completing a class that's approved by the TCEQ. For example, the A&amp;M AgriLife class or the Environmental Training Systems class, which the latter one already addresses drip and spray. The AgriLife class, I've got a commitment from the developer of that class, who Jeannie and I talked about earlier, I guess it was last week, since it wasn't yesterday, that he is committed to changing that class to include drip and also have it in Spanish by the end of the year. So there are classes available that teach homeowners how to maintain drip and spray. And he also said any other variation, he will include by the end of the year. In the proposal, the homeowner must report three times a year or every four months, which is what is currently being required by the maintenance providers. So the amount of paperwork would remain the same. And yes, there are ways to find out if they're doing it because they will have to report. And just because they put it on a paper, does that mean they're doing it? That could apply to the maintenance providers as well. And we do have evidence that that is currently happening with maintenance providers. So who's doing it does not, I think there's a false sense of of security that having a maintenance provider ensures that the system will be maintained. We have evidence that that is not happening. If the homeowner fails or is cited by the environmental health two times within the 12-month period, the homeowner will be required to go back on a contract. So yes, there, this does not take any authority away from the environmental department within Hood County to cite a system, whether it's maintained by a maintenance provider, whether it's maintained by a homeowner. They still have the same authority to cite or penalize that system, whoever's maintaining it. So I've included in the example of two forms that would need to be completed by the homeowner who opts to maintain their system. Additionally, the affidavit to the public would need to be created, a new affidavit would need to be created. And those homeowners that opt to take the course and maintain their own would need to sign a new affidavit. So also, I think that there's a false expectation that there's going to be a rush of people that are going to want to take this class and maintain their own. I don't expect that. Ms. Dax said she didn't expect that. So in, just in wrapping this up, my comments, I just wanted to make that clear that this is not really changing what's happening. It's just changing who's doing it. And if a homeowner wishes to take the class, invest their time and their money to take the class and maintain their own system, who best to do it? After all, they live there, their family lives there. They're not going to want to live in, with a septic system that's not working. Also, just to make sure everyone knows, the vote today is to approve the proposal, approve or not, the proposal to go to the TCEQ. The TCEQ will take time then to review it. And if they approve it, it will come back to Hood County and there will be a public hearing before things are changed. So just want to make sure people knew that this, what happens today doesn't necessarily change anything right away. It just is a step to send to TCEQ. And I didn't know if Commissioner Andrews wanted to say anything before we go on or?
I have some comments I would like to make, but if Jeannie wants to come up and speak first, then she can go ahead and do that. However.
Judge, Commissioners, Lake Granbury provides water for more than 250,000 people in over 15 cities. It is also the source of the cooling water for the steam electric power plant and Comanche Peak Nuclear Plant. In addition to municipal and industrial uses, the lake is a recreational haven for local water enthusiasts. In 2008, Lake Granbury did not meet the state's water quality standards. In order to keep the lake off the 303D list, the state's impaired waters commissioner, impaired waters commissioner Mike Simpson of Precinct One petitioned that Hood County Environmental Health would walk the shorelines of Lake Granbury in search of exposed pipes and inspect all systems close to the lake. HOAs and POAs were contacted and property owners aided in getting the TDML, which is the total daily maximum load of the maximum amount of pollutant that a body of water can receive while still meeting water quality standards. It was also deemed that having an independent third-party maintenance provider inspect and report findings within the county to the environmental health department would be productive to the lake and the future of the lake. This saved the taxpayers' money in the end because the county did not have to physically inspect all systems, but went out on complaints. The state deemed this sufficient, stating that should the levels reach unsafe again, maintenance contracts, along with more stringent items, would be incurred on Hood County. Our book has a section for septics specifically for areas in the Edwards Aquifer that makes it more strict. Do we want that for Hood County? Currently, the city of Granbury's wastewater plant releases water that is cleaner than our lake. The Brazos River Authority ran an article in January of 2022 regarding the levels at the 51 bridge were increasing. All neighboring counties have impaired bodies of water. Hood County does not. You can say the maintenance contracts are a scam. And I have taken some to court. I have another one that is in court. I would like the state to pull his license and then hopefully, if I can get enough convictions on him, I can get that done. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. When that river was tested from, at the 51 bridge, how close is Lake Granbury to going into an impaired water at this time?
I know that the Brazos River Authority is concerned about it. We had a fish kill, a large fish kill that started basically at the 51 bridge and went all the way to Indian Harbor.
That didn't answer my question. Is the fish kill the result of Lake Granbury being close to being impaired again?
The levels are going back up, yes. And what they do, they test for a, the state recreational standard, standard is 126 MPN per 100 milliliter. I know this year we have already reached 45 MPN. If you go into some of the areas right now, you can test that water and it's going to test over the 126.
And if that happens, with your job and your experience in here, what's going to happen to the lake? What's going to happen? What is TCEQ going to do, in your opinion?
At that point, this lake is deemed unsafe for recreation.
And that's happening with our current rule to require all of the septic aerobic systems to have contracts.
At that point, yes, it would require all of them to have contracts.
No, I mean, the current, the current situation, the current situation has occurred even though we have contracts in place.
The current, yes, at that point in time, it did. But this, the contracts are there to assist the county in finding issues. When they did the test in 2000, in this timeframe, the canals, they put dye and the canals turned the color of the dye. We worked and have gotten some of that under control. The 51 Bridge, Bee Creek, that area is still one of the hotter spots. It was voted down in 2000 to do a regional wastewater plant when the county had a chance to do it. And the taxpayers voted it down.
Well, I say, this is not two sides to the same coin. This is not death to the lake or people getting to do their own inspections. I would dare say, you know, you brought up the point about a safety inspection on your car. You don't walk out there 11 months after the last inspection and go, well, that was inspected. Everything must be just fine. You send, before you put your, your children or, you know, people that you love behind the wheel of a car, you teach them how to do some things. You check the air pressure. You make sure that these tires are up. You maintain the filters. You do your oil changes. You do your transmission fluid. And that's what these checks are. That's what the inspections are. You go out there, you check filters, you check the pumps, you make sure that the alarms are sounding. This is not rocket science. This is a small list of things that you do to make sure that your system is functioning correctly. As Mr. Woodard pointed out, if something's wrong, he being informed and knowledgeable on the subject will now be able to identify that there's something wrong with his system and can address it. This is a, it's, it's a way to teach people more about their systems and do a better job of maintaining them. The vast majority of people are not going to live in their own sewage. As far as the $175 goes, perhaps that's enough money for somebody to be able to spend the money that they need on their system by saving that. This is not going to be a land rush of people coming in here to take this class to maintain these things themselves. It's still work. There's still paperwork that you're going to have to file. And I would assume that that paper is going to be very similar, if not exactly the same, as what's going to be filed right now by a third party. So we're not losing anything here. I think that we're looking at this in a very backwards way. We're not losing the protections. We're giving people the information and the knowledge to do this themselves, to do a better job of it. That's my point on this deal.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I'd like to throw in my two cents. According to the Texas Health and Safety Code, 366.0515, it says that the commission may not condition a permit on approval of an onsite sewage system for a single-family residence. If you go to subsection G, it says the owner of a single-family residence shall maintain the system directly or, or through a maintenance contract. Now, that's a statewide rule. That's in the Texas Health and Safety Code. That's statewide Texas legislative rule, statutory. And what happened here in Hood County is it was decided some years ago to make the rule more stringent. Maybe, I don't know, that was the thinking. But I think there's a fundamental issue here because in my, you know, I disagree with this agenda item, sir. I would, if it was up to me, we'd just go back to the state rules. Because here's the deal. I agree with Commissioner Andrews. Nobody's got a vested interest in allowing their own septic system to become a health hazard. And yes, it happens. Certainly does. And they get, neighbors call them out and you go out there. But this is a fundamental difference here that we disagree because we're going on the assumption here with all these rules and regulations that people won't do the right thing. And I kind of feel like people will do the right thing. And so we don't need the jackboot of government. This is my opinion. On the paper, because there's a difference between what the rule says and what in reality happens. There's a huge difference. And I would, I would challenge someone to bring me, we got, you just heard a man testify, there's 29 counties upriver from us. How do you know what part of this, if any, of the lakes, environmental issue, whatever the number is, how much of that is contributed? Can you break that down into how much is contributed by alleged septic system failures, if any, versus what's coming downstream from 29 counties? If you can't separate that out, how do we know what's going in here from septic systems in this county? I had an aerobic system myself, which I didn't want to do when I first got it put in because I was used to a conventional system where it, you know, you had a leach field and lateral line and, and it was a self-working situation. An aerobic system's like a mini, a mini-city municipal wastewater plant. You got sludge in the first tank and the second tank's a treatment. By the time you get to the third tank, you've almost got clean water. And by the time it's dispersed on your lawn, it's pretty clear water that evaporates or whatever. I don't see it. I don't even understand how that would ever get in the lake, myself. So I think at this juncture, we, Hood County put this rule into effect several years ago. And in my opinion, we just need to go by the state rules and assume that people have enough sense to take care of their own aerobic system or their own septic system. And I don't see what good we've done by having, except to help a private company put money in their books. I don't see what, I don't, I can't see any measured, statistical measurement to show me that it makes any difference.
Well, I think it does. I think we do have some statistics. When they did the water testing and found that in 2009, that Lake Granbury was impaired, and then the county passed the stringents that said you had to have a maintenance contract, the lake went from impaired to non-impaired. And Lake Granbury is the only body of water in our surrounding counties that is not impaired. The rest of the counties, Johnson, Parker, E-Rath, all their bodies of water are impaired. I don't want, I don't think we should take a chance. I don't swim in the lake. I don't boat in the lake. And these, when you said there's no evidence about it, as soon as they went to more stringent qualifications, Lake Granbury went off the impaired lake. Am I right on that, Ms. Dax?
Yes.
And we're still off. What happens? There are some bad maintenance contractors in here. And like Ms. Dax said, she's out to get them. And she's got some evidence about it and she's filing on them. And we want to take their license away if they're not doing what they're saying they're supposed to be doing. But, you know, the homeowner, like the gentleman that spoke up here first, about there, when the maintenance people come out there, he should be out there with them and make sure to see what they are doing. But the horn that doesn't go off, I mean, if it's been gone for 10 years, I mean, that needs to be repaired to let you know that something is going on. I mean, you noticed it too. I mean, it has to be, everybody shares some response. I mean, it has to be, everybody shares some responsibility here. It just, you know, they come out there to inspect it, and something is going wrong, and I'm not missing it. You need to question who the owner is, and there's other maintenance provider, and I'd get a new maintenance provider. I got certain standards they have to, have to keep up. But that's what happened, folks, and I'm not personally, I think I'm being a good, I'm up here representing all of Hood County, not just the people that live close to the lake, but people all over Hood County. That's what I said. I don't come and represent a certain precinct. I do what's best for all the people of Hood County. And I think what's best for all the people of Hood County is to keep Lake Granbury being an unimpaired body of water so that Ms. Davis and her children and grandchildren go out and swim in it every summer. That's what I'm interested in. That's what I'm interested in. So, and I think that history has proven that when we have service contracts, that's what happens. And maybe some of them are lax. And Jeannie Stacks, I hope that you are on them to make sure that you file because I think that in talking with various JPs that we have now, where these complaints would come up, I think these JPs are going to listen to these cases and pay very, very close attention to them. That's what I think's going to happen, and I think you're going to weed out the bad maintenance providers. So me, for one, I want to keep the rules, I'd rather keep the rules more stringent. If it up to me, I'd want to keep them more stringent than what they are because I think if it falls back again, I think TCEQ or BRA is going to have some real stringent rules out here. But that's my opinion on it. Anybody else have any other comments?
I would like to, I am totally with you that the enforcement is very key. And again, there are provisions in here for that enforcement. If a homeowner's not taking care of the system correctly, much like the service providers who are not doing their job correctly, there's an enforcement mechanism that says, no, you're not allowed to do that anymore. You will have to sign a contract with a third party on that. So there is enforcement for both sides of it, both the service providers and the homeowner that wants to do this for themselves. And I dare say, the neighbors aren't going to let you get away with this. If somebody's out there not doing it, the neighbor's going to call in. Their house, they smell it from their house. The service providers that are driving up and down the street, if they see something wrong, you better believe they're going to call in and make a report on this deal. And, you know, and in '08, I would, I don't know as though, and I think maybe that was the point Commissioner Eagle was alluding to here, there were a lot of problems going on in '08. This wasn't just a lack of maintenance with aerobic septic systems going on. We had neighborhoods with leach fields, more or less, just pouring right into the lake, and all that has been corrected, and public sewer lines have been run through there to deal with this problem. So this is not, this is not the only prong in the enforcement of '08. But again, people should have the right to take care of themselves until they've proven otherwise. That's what liberty is about. That's what freedom's about.
I think there's a misconception that this is loosening up some type of rule. This is not loosening up a rule. This is just changing who's doing the work. The same work will be done. It will just be, and the reports will be filed in the same manner. It's just who's doing the work and who's filing it. I do swim in the lake, so, you know, you guys may know that I'm a swimmer. So I do swim in the lake. I'm very, I'm very interested in keeping it very safe. I don't think that, this is not changing, maintaining the quality of the lake. This is just changing who's doing the work. And a homeowner who lives there, whose family is there playing in the yard, playing in the water behind their house, if they live on the lake, whatever, they're not going to endanger their own family. And if there is someone who is not maintaining, Jeannie has the exact same authority that she has today to file a citation, take them to court, issue them, issue a penalty. She has the same authority, whether it's a maintenance provider or a homeowner. So that is not changing. So I just wanted to clear that up. So I guess with that, I'll make the motion to submit to TCEQ an amendment to the rules of Hood County, Texas for On-Site Sewage Facilities, known as OSSF, dated April 25, 2014. The proposed amendment is to establish provisions for the homeowners to maintain the OSSF at their primary residence after initial two-year period. Hood County homeowners may choose to self-maintain aerobic systems upon completion of one of the TCEQ-approved courses listed on the Hood County website. This change is in compliance with the Texas Administrative Code Title 30, Chapter 2, 85.7, which states homeowners who maintain their own systems are exempt from contract requirements as provided in subsection D4 of this section.
Second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Samuelson, as stated in the record, which is verbatim and what is in item number three, read into the record, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further comment or question? If not, all.
Should I make a little comment?
I'm sorry, ma'am. You didn't fill out a public participation form, did you? I'm sorry. You, that's the rules. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion say nay.
Nay.
So the motion passes three to two. All right. The next item is item number four, convening to executive session pursuant to sections 55.071 and 55.072 of the Texas Government Code to discuss purchase negotiations for property located in Precinct 1. Reconvene into open session and take appropriate action if necessary. So at this time, at 10:18, we're going to recess into executive session at this time. Okay, that's, we're back on the record here at 10:30. And no action was done, and there are no motion to be taken on item number four. So we're next to item number five, consider and take appropriate action to issue Brazos River Acres 10 vouchers for Hood County Citizens Collection Station with an expiration date of September 30 of 2023. Did you want to speak on that, Mr. Granick, doctor? Okay, well, all right.
Yes, Commissioner.
Go ahead. The floor is yours, Ms. Stacks.
Commissioner Samuelson approached me and asked about getting some vouchers for Brazos River Acres. This will help with the continued cleanup in some of the rural areas. So we would like to do a cleanup for, or vouchers to help clean up that area.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Good. Anything else? Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, thank you. I'd like to make the motion to issue Brazos River Acres 10 vouchers for Hood County Citizens Collection Station with an expiration date of September 30, 2023.
Second. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to issue Brazos River Acres 10 vouchers for Hood County Citizens Collection Station with an expiration date of September 30 of 2023, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number six, discuss and acknowledge increased activity and workload adjusted as the Priest Precinct 2 and Constable Precinct 2 offices. Okay.
All right. So thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to commend JP and Constable 2 for their, and their staff for the work they've been doing. I've noticed since I track the monthly reports that the workload has been consistently increasing. Just looking at Constable Shirley's reports over the last three months, his total activity has increased fivefold. The civil papers have also increased fivefold. His bailiff hours have increased seven times, and his miles traveled have, has increased by 91%. First, I just want to thank all the staff in JP 2 Court and Constable Shirley, and also Constable Jordan's administrative assistant, Patricia Ridley, for the job they're doing. I'll continue to watch this over the coming months, and as maintaining this level of increased activity without dedicated staff is not sustainable. JP 2 has over 1,370 cases pending, with 760 of those just since 2022. So I just wanted to recognize the outstanding job they've been doing, and just, that's it. I just want to make that comment and just thank them.
All right, the next item is item number seven, is to discuss and take appropriate action and adhere to the same protocol during public workshop as with regular scheduled meetings of the Commissioners' Court as relates to the invocation and pledges. Again, Commissioner Samuelson.
Yes, thank you, Judge. When I attended several workshops over the last several years, I really didn't understand why there wasn't an invocation and a pledge at those meetings, just at the regularly scheduled meetings. Why not always ask for the Lord's guidance and always give, recognize, and honor our country and our state? So just recently, you all may know that we had a workshop with the city and the ISD, and I noticed that we did do an invocation pledge there. So it just reminded me to bring this up in court and, you know, bring it, bring it here and see what others think. So that's what this is about, if you want to discuss it or if you want me to go ahead and make the motion.
Well, I discussed it with Pastor Mike McMahon, who gets our pastors for the regular Commissioners' Court, and I asked him about it, and he said that he could arrange that, but he would need at least a week's notice to be able to arrange to get a pastor. It was really Bill Miller's and my idea five years ago to get pastors rather than just calling ad hoc members out of the audience to give the invocation. And I was telling Bill, who I miss very much, was a great guy, to do that, and I says, and I mean, anybody that believes in Jesus Christ is their Savior, get them. I'm talking about the Catholics, the Mormons, and everybody else. He did. He got everybody in the community, and I think it brings the community together to get their pastors to come up here and be involved in the Commissioners' Court. So he's on board with doing that, and so anytime we're going to get Commissioners' Court, we just need to remember to call him, and he will arrange to get a pastor for us to do that. So if you want to make the motion, I'll second it.
All right. I'd like to make the motion to adhere to the same protocol during the public workshops as with regularly scheduled meetings of the Commissioners' Court as relates to invocation and pledges.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Now, the next thing is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a proper motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have the, well, the key here, we have Donald Lenny finally bringing us some business here. Mr. Lenny on road operations here. What do you have for us, sir?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Hood County received a petition from the Comanche Cove Homeowner Association to assume maintenance on two of their roadways, or a portion of a roadway and then a roadway. After receiving that petition, I spoke with Commissioner Samuelson. We went over each one that they had submitted. These two before you, Dove Trail from Corona Drive to Centaurus Way is 530 feet. The Sabine River Trail is from Peas River Drive to Pecos River Drive at 235 feet. Both of these do meet our guidelines for our road policy of accepting these for maintenance.
So you're saying that they're approved. Well, good. Would you, any further discussion?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you do.
No, not a problem, ma'am.
You really do a great job.
I'll second that motion. Okay. All right. You'd like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to accept the following roadways in the Comanche Cove development onto the county road system. Dove Trail from Corona Drive to Centaurus Way, 530 feet. Sabine River Trail from Peas River Drive to Pecos River Drive, 235 feet.
I hear a second. Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the following roadways in Comanche Cove into the county road system. That's Dove Trail from Corona Drive to Centaurus Way, and Sabine River Trail from Peas River Drive to Pecos River Drive, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Okay. Development, Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. First public hearing we have today is the site development plan for Drake Edward Jones.
Okay, at this time, at 20, at 10:40, we're going to convene into a public hearing. Yes, sir.
The property for this site development plan is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3 and will be served by A-Mud Water and On-Site Sewage Facilities. The property is located in the ETJ of the City of DeKalb, at 1321 Fall Creek Highway, Granbury. Site development plan is for a 0.632 of an acre tract that embraces part of the John McCoy Survey, abstract number 381, in Hood County. Proposed site development plan proposes to construct a 2,500-square-foot office space with concrete parking and fair lane. There are no variances associated with this site development plan, and all comments have been addressed. Staff recommends conditional approval of the site development plan contingent upon receiving a driveway permit from TechDOT.
Okay. Any comments or questions? If not, at 10:39, we adjourn back into Commissioners' Court. Okay, do you, I hear a motion.
Yes, I propose that we approve the site development plan for the Drake Edwards Jones
Your second.
Contingent upon approval by TechDOT?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
Have a second.
So the motion is to consider the site development, to pass the site development plan of Drake Edwards Jones on a conditional approval upon TechDOT, seconded by Commissioner Andrews, motion by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, at this time, we're going to adjourn back and at 10:42, into a public hearing. Mr. Head.
All right, this public hearing is for the site development plan for Dapper Dog Acton. The property for this site development plan is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3 and will be served by A-Mud Water and On-Site Sewage Facilities. This property is also located in the ETJ of the City of DeKalb, at 3261 Fall Creek Highway. The site development plan is for one acre tract embracing part of the John McCoy Survey, abstract number 381, Hood County. This proposed site development plan proposes to construct an 8,600-square-foot building with parking, concrete parking. There are no variances. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends conditional approval, contingent upon TechDOT awarding their driveway permit.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anyone?
One entrance off of 377, I mean, off of Fall Creek, not one off the side. Okay.
Not on the plan.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we will recess, convene back into Commissioners' Court here at 10:47. Okay? Okay? So do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the site development plan for the Dapper Dog Acton with contingent upon the approval by TechDOT for the entranceway off of Highway 167.
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the site development plan of Dapper Dog, a condition upon the approval of TechDOT, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Judge, Commissioners, for today's court, you have expenditures in the amount of $637,741.54. You've also been given a report regarding payments over $10,000. The auditor's office has reviewed all these invoices and recommends payment.
Any questions or comments regarding the payment of bills? If not, do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion. We pay the bills for $637,741.54.
A motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to pay the bills in an amount of $637,741.54, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. I understand, Ms. Kidd, you wish to pull item number two?
Yes.
Okay. So item number two is pulled from the docket for later consideration. Sorry, Ms. Harrell. Okay. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay.